Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. It's a lot of us here tonight. I have an honorary gavel that has my name on it that I would prefer to never have to use. And so I'm just asking that with so many people in the room that we be mindful of other people's comments when they're speaking so that we can go through the meeting, no jeering and booing and all of that. We just want to be kind, take care of the city, the business of the city, and then we're going to move on. We want to stand in respect to one of our former employees and her family, Tish Callahan, who meant so much to so many of us in so many different facets. We will stand and have a moment of silence before we proceed. We'll now have the invocation. Lord Jesus, we come to you on tonight with different reasons for having heavy hearts. And Lord, I just believe that you're the God of them all. Father, I believe you have Muskogee strategically placed in this season so that we can respond to crises no matter what they are. And I pray, oh Lord, that on tonight, that you give our community the wisdom and the guidance that they need so that, Lord, in times of tragedy and urgency, Father, that we may come together and not be divided apart. It's okay to have different opinions, for Lord, you uniquely created us with our own identities. But, Lord, I pray that as a community, in spite of our uniqueness, that we find oneness to come together for a greater good, which is to grow our community, keep people safe, and help them move on to the next level of their lives. Be kind to us tonight on every agenda item through every meeting. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Let us look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
And for the recording and minutes purposes, we are calling to order the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority for July 11th, 2022. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of June 13th, 2022, and special call session MMA minutes of June 27th, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Hopefully, we all have an opportunity to have reviewed those minutes. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second on item number one. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number one passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending June 30, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, the claims have been reviewed by staff, and we do recommend the approval.
We have a recommendation from Mr. Stewart. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second on item number two. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item new pa- item number two passes. That will conclude that meeting. We will now open the meeting for the Muskogee City Council for July 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Here.
Thank you. We have one person having signed up to speak to us tonight in the general comment section. I'm going to entertain a motion that we move Mr. Tyler Evans up to speak now to give us an update on the situation regarding the Greenleaf Apartments.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to take public comments now. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, again to the council, this is just public comments. We are not dialoguing. Mr. Evans, give us your name and your address. You'll have 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Tyler Evans. I'm the Director of Emergency Management for the City of Muskogee located at 520 Court Street here in Muskogee. So I want to give everybody an update on the disaster that we have on Saturday with the Greenleaf Apartment Fire. Approximately about 70 apartment units were affected, which would be the entire apartment complex. Only one of the three buildings did burn, however, the other two suffered a lot of smoke damage, water damage. Utilities are shut off to the apartment complex along with various code violations that will need to be corrected before we can actually let residents back into that facility. So it's going to be an extended period of time before we're allowed to open that facility back up. So we have set up a temporary shelter here at the Muskogee Civic Center. We're housing about 35 people there. The American Red Cross is on scene, has been working with us for the past couple of days. I've reached out to the state Oklahoma Emergency Management. They'll be coming down tomorrow to bring some other civic organizations with them so we can help find these people housing. As we know, the housing market is kind of crazy right now along with apartments. These aren't your standard market rate apartments. These were kind of subsidized, supported, federally supported apartments that make things a little bit more difficult to find those, right? So we're having to find 35 apartments at the drop of a hat. It's been a little difficult, but we are making headway on that. So I want to give thanks to the community. It's been an absolutely outpouring support to help run this shelter from the donations of food to lunches to dinners to supplies, water, clothing, sandals, you name it, that has shown up there. So thank you so much for our community. It makes me feel so proud to be the Director of Emergency Management here in Muskogee. There's so much I didn't even have to do to ask for because you guys brought it here for us. So with that, the immediate needs for our residents here at the shelter have been met. They got plenty of food. We have plenty of water. The clothing has kind of been met. So if you still have that will to give, that heart to give, you want to help, I'm going to ask that if you could, please donate to the Muskogee County Disaster Recovery Committee. This was set up in 2019 after a huge flood that happened. I sat on that board along with some members of council sets on that board, some county-elected officials, and that guarantees your dollars, your money that you donate stays in Muskogee County. It doesn't leave here. It's for the disasters that happen here in town. So if you're willing to do that, you can donate to Neighbors Building Neighborhoods. Instead, it's for the MCDRC, the Muskogee County Disaster Recovery Committee. Couple of different ways you can do that. You can go down to 207 North Second Street to NBN, or you can call 918-683-4600 and talk to Julie or Kim. Like I said, they do take monetary donations there. They can also take payments over the phone as well. Everything's tracked. There's a treasurer. There's a secretary. There's minutes. It's an official organization that keeps track of this monetary funds for us, and it lets it stay here in Muskogee. So we are making headway on getting our residents taken care of. It's been a team effort, and we'll continue to do that throughout the week. But I do want to switch gears a little bit. I do have another guest speaker with me to talk about the flooding that happened back in May. The May floods, the storms that came through caused a lot of damages to the Meadowsoil and so forth. So FEMA did declare that as a disaster. We will be receiving individual assistance through FEMA and SBA to help our residents that were affected. So I would like to bring up Mr. Corey Williams. He's with the Small Businesses, Small Business Administration to kind of talk about a little bit that process. The latest update today, we're working on, I'm working with FEMA and the state on setting up a resource center where residents will be able to go and talk to the SBA. They can talk to FEMA. They can talk to legal aid and sit down and talk with somebody. I don't have a location or a date yet. Like I said, we just started that process today, but as soon as we get that figured out, we'll push that out in the Phoenix, the radio stations, the social media. I've got everybody's phone number. I've got a couple hundred phone numbers. I'm going to push that out with our mass notification system. They will know when we have those dates. But I do want to turn it over to Mr. Corey Williams with the SBA to talk a little bit about that process for the May floods.
Thank you very much, Tyler. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to present today. My name is Corey Williams, Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. On June 30th, President Biden declared seven counties in the state of Oklahoma as a major disaster, Muskogee being one, Tulsa, Adair, Cherokee, Seminole, Potawatomi. Let's see what the other ones are. We have Adair and Akmogee. So seven counties, as Tyler alluded to, are eligible for the Individuals and Households Program. So that allows direct assistance to homeowners and renters and business owners and nonprofits as well. So the first step in the disaster recovery process is actually to, to actually register with FEMA. And you can do that three ways. You can go to disasterassistance.gov. Again, that's disasterassistance.gov. Or you can call the FEMA 1-800 number, which is 800-621-3362. Again, that's 800-621-3362. And 3362 actually spells out FEMA in case you forget that. And then FEMA has a mobile app that you can download as well. So once you register with FEMA, you, you may receive a referral to my agency, the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. And one of the most common questions every homeowner or renter may ask is, why SBA? I don't have a business. Well, in times of disaster, the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance offers loans to not only businesses of all sizes, but homeowners, renters, and nonprofits. Businesses can borrow up to $2 million to repair, replace disaster-damaged real estate, machinery, inventory, equipment. But the most important thing I really want to kind of emphasize for the business owners as we're coming from COVID with the pandemic as far as the, you know, the actual economic injury that was caused as a result to our small businesses is the working capital loans. So we have the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, which provides working capital to business owners to sustain themselves during this recovery period. And one of the things, one of the common questions we always have as well is for business owners who may not want to pledge collateral. You can borrow up to $25,000 for your physical loss and up to $25,000 for economic injury without pledging collateral. Now, you can't cross-collateralize, can't get $50,000 for economic injury or $50,000 for physical loss, but you can get up to $25,000 for the physical loss and up to $25,000 for economic injury, and that's an unsecured loan. But again, businesses can borrow up to $2 million. Interest rates are as low as 2.935%. And all of our loans will carry a standard five-month deferment, so you're not coming right into making repayment on any kind of loan. Nonprofits, they have, they can borrow up to $2 million to repair, replace, again, real estate, machinery, inventory, equipment, and also working capital. That's a fixed interest rate of 1.875%. And our homeowners can borrow up to $200,000 to repair, replace disaster-damaged real estate and up to $40,000 to repair, replace disaster-damaged personal property, which could also include any automobiles that may have been lost as a result of the severe storms, tornadoes, and flooding. And the interest rates for the homeowners is as low as 1.688%. Now, for renters, they can borrow again up to $40,000 for repair, replace personal property and also replace their vehicles. But the reason why it's so important that if you are, if you do receive a referral to the U.S. Small Business Administration, we encourage you to complete the application because if we're unable to approve you for a loan, we can refer you to a program called Other Needs Assistance, and that's a program run by FEMA, which is a grant program. Now, the most common question most business owners ask is, is there any grants for businesses? Unfortunately, there are not any grant programs for our businesses, but at least for the homeowners and renters by kind of following the checks and balances system that if you are referred to the U.S. Small Business Administration, we encourage you to please, please, please submit that application because, again, everybody has that mentality that, what if I get approved for a loan? Well, what if you don't? If you don't get approved, we can refer you right back to FEMA for grant assistance. Now, we do have deadlines. So the deadline to apply for the homeowners or any kind of physical loss for our business owners is August 29th, 2022. It's a 60-day period from the time that President Biden actually declared the severe storms, tornadoes, and flooding. Now, for the economic injury, it's actually a nine-month deadline, but what we encourage you to do is that, especially for our business owners, don't wait until month eight or month nine to realize, hey, I had a loss in sales. I had to lay off employees. I couldn't pay my Chamber of Commerce fees. All those are signs of economic injury. So that's why we always want to make sure that business owners are very proactive in making sure to identify economic injury early in the process. But I want to thank you so much for allowing me to speak today, and you have a great evening. Thank you.
Item, we will now consider rather the approval of the minutes for the city council regular session, June 27th, 2022. Hopefully, we've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Do we have a correction to the minutes or there's a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to approve on the minutes for June 27th, 2022. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number one.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the request from Oatmogee Enterprises LLC for a specific use permit for the cultivation and processing of medical marijuana facility located at 800 West Oatmogee Avenue, or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is an application filed by NBW Broadway asking for a specific use permit to open a medical marijuana grow facility. The properties to the south include the Muskogee Library, First Baptist Church. The properties to the north include Ounce House, which is a grow and dispensary license, a shoe repair shop, a restaurant, a flower shop. The properties to the west include a pediatric, pediatric doctor's office, an appliance store, and a counseling facility. The properties to the east include an insurance company, Archer's Dry Cleaning, a pond shop, and an auto repair shop. The applicant is also present this evening to answer any questions. The Planning Commission denied the application on July 5th of this year. Based on that denial and some of the factors that I'm going to go through, the Planning Commission will also, is also stating that it denies the, the request for an application. The factors that we considered was looking at whether or not the property was zoned correctly, whether it would contribute to city sales tax, to jobs and spending in the area. We do answer to the affirmative in that. The problem that we have is based on the, the people who showed up at the Planning Commission, there were, there were multiple businesses and people upset about this. So we have to say that it does have an impact on the community, and it appears to be negative. That's a factor that we absolutely have to address. One of the things that we look at is could the property value of the surrounding neighborhoods, homes, and the businesses be reduced? We don't have any substantial evidence as to that, so we can't say that. In theory, it could happen. Again, we don't have that kind of an evidence. Another thing that we look at is will the proposed use be detrimental to the neighbors? Based on the people speaking at the Planning Commission and the number of people here tonight and the, who have signed up to speak, we have to answer in the affirmative that the proposed use will be detrimental to the neighborhood. It is correctly zoned, and again, we do look at that, but based on the surrounding complaints, the concerns about the odors, the regular appearance of odors as it is in Muskogee from grows, it's something that we do look at and take very seriously. Increased traffic, we also looked at, that should not be a problem. It's a, a grow facility, not a dispensary. The traffic of loading or unloading goods should not be a factor to consider. We also have to look at the density. If you look on this map, the proposed, or the business at 800 West Oatmogee is highlighted in the yellow block. Right behind it is a grow facility called Ounce House. And then over to the right at the old post office is June Green, another grow facility. So when we look at density, we have to consider that there are two existing grows already in the city, and they are downtown and is significant. We need to consider environmental concerns. Will there be significant water runoff? We don't know the answer to that. Are there potentially hazardous chemicals being used? We don't know that. We don't know if there's going to be any kind of an impact on the city's stormwater, sanitary sewer, or water service. So since these above factors negatively impact the neighbors or the community as a whole, we have to ask, are there conditions that would limit the impact? One of the things that we look at is restricting odor escape. We don't know whether or not the applicants can restrict the odor escape. We received some documents this evening. I have not had a chance to review those, but that's something that definitely needs to be addressed. So does restricting water runoff, limiting hazardous chemicals, parking and loading capabilities are things to look at. There's a two-year moratorium from House Bill 3208 that goes into effect on August the 1st. That will put a two-year moratorium on any kind of grows, dispensaries, any kind of license. This is one of our last ones that we're processing before that moratorium goes into effect. So based on the negative impact or the perceived negative impact on the neighborhood, the number of complainants that we've had, and the density of the grows in the downtown area, and the Planning Commission, their denial of July 5th, 2022, planning does recommend denial.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhammer. We have several residents signed up to speak to us tonight. I'm going to call you to the microphone. You are to give us your name and your address. You will have five minutes to speak. The first speaker is Michael Gregg.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor, and also council members. Just have a question more.
Give us your name and address for the.
Pardon me. Michael Gregg, 4131 South Rob, Muskogee, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
In, did some researching the information that, about procedures, but in the council rules of procedure, I had in, in Section D, a question, more for Mr. Tucker, probably because of the nature of it. If you allow me to scroll down. It has to do with roll call votes. And again, pardon me, residue of a cold. I don't know if you have access to it or not. Do you want me to read that so it's a little?
I do not have it pulled up.
Okay, I'll read. Or if you want to, you can have my laptop and take a look at it.
Just ask, ask your question, maybe I know the answer.
The question is, it's, it's one paragraph, multiple, two sentences with two questions. One, it says, "A council member may vote yea, nay, or abstain. A council member who refuses to vote or pass shall be recorded as a yea vote." My question there is, why would it not be abstain? Because they abstained. Is that a typo?
No, the abstentions have to count either for or against in determining whether there is a majority or a minority.
Well, if you allow that to go as a, a yea, that automatically shifts the vote. Is the recorded vote of the individual who didn't vote, is that recorded into documents?
Yes.
Okay. Next question. And unless the member has a conflict of interest and states in the record the grounds of disqualification, can you give me in terms of what we're talking about now and this article, or actually the grow out, what would be a conflict of interest for the members that are voting?
Sure. For example, if they had any financial interest in the company, in the sale of the property, in if they sat on the Board of Directors of the company, things of that nature.
And this one particular one, or if they have multiple ones, or just an addition to, because you have LLCs that can run down a pipe dry and lean forever, and there'll be multiple ways of being involved in a business, but not necessarily attached on the first level of board member, owner, or part owner, or if it's wife or husband ownership, or if it's a cousin, father. So how do you determine how deep that goes, or ownership and conflict of interest?
We have a requirement that conflict of interest has to be disclosed by the council member in advance. Otherwise, there's no way I could research who owns every LLC that comes before the council. So there's an affirmative duty on the council member to do so.
Any repercussions if that's not done?
It's a violation of the ethics policy and potentially could give rise to a cause of action under state law.
Okay. That's all my question, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. The next resident having signed up to speak tonight is Pastor Kevin Chartney. I'm going to ask if you come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Kevin Chartney. Address is 4200 High Oaks Street, right here in Muskogee, Oklahoma. As of January 26, 2022 of this year, there were listed 99 grows in the city of Muskogee, not county, but city. If you ask me, in my opinion, that is 99 too many. Today, we are here to consider yet another additional grow, not just in downtown, but in the city of Muskogee. I am here to submit to you as a pastor in this town and as a pastor of First Baptist Church that is directly across from this potential grow, that the societal costs are far greater than the potential revenue that is boasted by any marijuana or grow facility in this town. The cost due to marijuana's effects on mental health, on crime, on domestic abuse, on unemployment, on homelessness, and its use as a gateway drug to further drugs is far greater than any potential revenue that these would have for our city. I am here today specifically to represent the people of First Baptist Church. I am the pastor there, and I would just ask that for those who are affiliated with First Baptist Church in this room, would you please stand and/or raise your hand if you're already standing? Thank you very much. The location of this potential grow is important. It is right across from the public library where children and other people frequent. It is directly across from First Baptist Church where we have multiple programs for children throughout the week, including Sunday School, a weekday childcare, summer camp from 8:00 to 5:00 every single day, two separate homeschool co-ops that meet at our church all year long. In addition, it is just a block away from Hous Pediatric and also Fostering Hope. These are entities that are directly involved with children. Let me remind you, we worship from time to time in our facility through the fog and nauseous odor of marijuana. That's what we are subjected to currently at First Baptist Church. When we walk out of our doors on a Sunday or Wednesday, it hits us like a freight train. When we get into our cars, the smell has seeped into the cab of our vehicle, and we have to drive home in it. Friends and council members, this is completely unacceptable for our city, completely unacceptable, even as it is currently. Additionally, as a pastor, my concern is for the moral erosion and decline of our city. We, we care about the residents of Muskogee, Oklahoma, and therefore, we must speak out against the ill effects of marijuana and grows right here in our own community. But with all of that said, let me remind you that the Planning and Zoning Commission of this city that is commissioned to plan and zone for this city unanimously voted to deny the specific use permit based on criteria that has been adopted by the city. These criteria are criteria for intense use entities in our town, and this is one of those. Some of those criteria are the general adverse effects, and listed among those adverse effects is odor pollution. Let me say that marijuana enterprises have effectively proven an utter and inconsiderate inability to eliminate odor pollution from their businesses, both in our city and our state broadly. Odor pollution is guaranteed with any grow or dispensary despite its adverse effects on neighbors, businesses, and the community at large. This will be guaranteed. As I walked over here from our church just before this meeting, I was hit by two of those and had to walk through the fog of both. inability to eliminate odor pollution from their businesses, both in our city and our state broadly. Odor pollution is guaranteed with any grow or dispensary despite its adverse effects on neighbors, businesses, and the community at large. This will be guaranteed. As I walked over here from our church just before this meeting, I was hit by two of those and had to walk through the fog of both. Number two are the decrease, the potential decrease in property value. That is not verifiable at this point, but you and I both know with common sense that that will be the case. Number three were the adverse effects on both business attraction and business investment downtown. Council, I think you would agree with me that if we lose downtown, we lose the city. Downtown is the heart of the city. That's where you build the city. And if you let downtown fall apart, you will have lost the city. I will say, let's not sell our city out to interests and entities who do not have our good in view. Let's build and create a city worth leaving to our children. Together, we are all here to say, no grow. Thank you for your time.
The next person having signed to speak to us tonight is Tony Kilgore. If you will come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, you will have five minutes.
My name is Tony Kilgore, and I represent the north half of Block 1 of Block 186, which is the block of this use permit is requesting. This is broadly known as 701 West Broadway, Bebs Floor.
Thank you.
And, you know, Bebs has been in business since 1910. And I think you'll all agree that we can, we qualify as a established, existing business. The proposed permit for the marijuana operation in this block will be detrimental and harmful to existing, established businesses in the area. The, take for, think for a minute. Skunky odor does not go well with fine fragrance cut flowers. Skunky odors does not go well with the fresh, clean scent of laundry and dry cleaning that our neighbor to the south at Seventh and Oakmogie business has. At the flower shop, we have to maintain a positive air pressure as much as possible on the inside of the shop to keep this odor outside. Unfortunately, the customers coming and going has to endure the skunky odor and smell that permeates the area from the old post office to the half a block to the west on Broadway. They get it from both ways when they come and go. You know, it's, it's kind of like the story of the old dog that chased the skunk under the house. And a little bit, that old dog came running out as fast as he could, and he says, "I've enjoyed all this, I can stand." Well, that's kind of where we are. We've had about all we can stand. And we respectfully request that this council reject and deny this special use permit on the basis that is detrimental and harmful to the existing businesses in the area. Thank you very much.
Kayla, as I call you to the microphone, if I mispronounce your name, please forgive me in advance, but the next person signed to speak up to us tonight is Kayla Nabi.
Yes, that's correct.
If you'll come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Kayla Nabi, and I am at, I'm with 800 West Oakmogie. Since 2011, our family has operated in several areas of the cannabis industry. We developed our mission the moment our family friend who was struggling with cancer treatment needed alternative remedies to aid her illness. Through our 11 years of experience, we found that the human body's natural endocannabinoid system opens up an opportunity for people to receive a wide array of medicinal benefits. Also, cannabis is a safe, safe and useful alternative to some of the harmful side effects associated with pharmaceuticals. Having operated in several areas of the industry, we have consistently created environments that are professional, welcoming, and family oriented. We have always strived to be an example in our community with having a high regard and respect for our neighbors. My mother, Lila, is the leading force on our team and was one of the first female dispensary owners, a true pioneer in the industry. Her cannabis endeavors included having a clean, welcoming, professional, and respectful environment. David opened the First Cannabis Resource Center where he hosted classes and provided information about cannabis to anyone interested. David and Lila joined together with their combined 25 years of cannabis and business experience to make an excellent team fueled by the same mission, to provide alternative help for those in need. The two of them went on to open several different dispensaries, cannabis grows, and branding organizations. They brought many jobs to the area and also set the standard for a new level of professionalism while alleviating the negative stigma associated with cannabis. Being considered an essential worker during the pandemic provided us the ability to service the community during an extremely difficult time. Our dispensary served as a safe haven for patients to escape the pandemic and isolation while finding comfort with us. Our motto of cultivating community represents our hope to bring unity and education by welcoming individuals from all walks of life and forging long-lasting relationships. In all of our cannabis ventures, we have prioritized supporting local communities by giving back in any way possible. Our mission has always been to cultivate community and to support locals in ways unprecedented in the cannabis industry, such as food and toy drives, sponsoring and supporting local businesses, offering cannabis education and information sessions, hosting free food giveaways and community social events, and volunteering at local organizations. Support for our neighbors only continues to grow throughout our time in the industry as we plan to continue that growth and prosperity in Muskogee. We have created a culture that welcomes all people. We have what it takes to set a new standard while chipping away at the negative stigma that has been associated with the cannabis industry for years. The ability to help others by providing alternative relief drives our passion for what we do while respecting and understanding the opinions of others. We arrived in Muskogee in November of 2021 as a unit of four, ready for a new adventure. The goal was to come here and regrow our lives, support the local community, and assist in the expansion of prosperity in Oklahoma. We arrived with the guidance from prayer and vision to expand our horizons throughout the state. Unfortunately, in December 2021, COVID struck our home, and Lila, my mother, lost her life. She was the heart and soul of our family and our business. Despite our family having been completely destroyed, the three of us have been trying to pick up the pieces and continue, having invested so much in effort, finances, and hope, including our building in Muskogee, and the most difficult of all being the loss of our Lila. As painful as it's been for us as a family, we want to carry on the vision and culture that Lila has developed within this industry. We want to continue building prosperity towards the vision for Muskogee and to eventually transform the industry as a whole. It is with great devastation that we have to carry on without our rooted foundation. However, we want to, at the very least, see the vision that emboldened Lila because of who Christ is in her. We are not a large corporation without regard for well-being of our neighbors. We are neighbors. We're fathers, we're mothers, we're daughters, friends, but overall, we're family. Each of the members in our group have a vested interest in making Muskogee our home while supporting and connecting with the locals in every way possible. We want to put our best foot forward for the industry as a whole. Lila always practiced having a clean, welcoming, professional, and respectful environment. She put her heart and soul into cannabis and wanted to elevate the lives of those around her. We hope to gain your support in these incredibly difficult times and hopefully become an example of how you would like to see the cannabis industry operate in your town. Thank you so much for your time and consideration today.
Thank you, Ms. Nabi. The next person having signed to speak to us tonight is David Webb II. I'm going to invite you to the microphone. Please give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
My name's David Webb. I'm with 800 West Oakmogie as well. Hello. Hey, everybody. Great to see you guys. Thank you for your time today. My name's David Webb II. Behind me is my father, David Webb, my fiancee, Kayla Nabi, my cousin, Jesse Hedges. We are a family business through and through. I'd like to start by saying that my grandmother and I have been active members at First Baptist Lincoln Park since 1997. So therefore, despite the topic today, I truly believe I'm amongst family and I'm happy to see every one of you guys. I would just like to share a little bit about myself and my family and what cannabis has done for us. So I'm currently a graduate student at Pepperdine University, a Christian university affiliated with the Churches of Christ. I've been an active cannabis user since 2006. I graduated in 2018 from the University of Southern California with honors in philosophy, politics, and law. I'm currently getting my master's in executive business and am preparing for my PhD in cognitive science next fall at Stanford University. I've worked directly with the Missile Defense Agency, the Council on Foreign Relations, and the Center for Strategic and International Studies. Everything that I've done and continue to do is because of my family's accomplishments in cannabis. I came to Oklahoma in December 2021 to help my grandmother, father, and stepmother recover from COVID pneumonia. I currently travel back and forth every two weeks to complete my MBA program and make sure that my father sees a full recovery. Sadly, as mentioned, I lost my stepmother on January 4th. My father and stepmother are very well-known throughout the industry. They've traveled extensively and are consultants for cannabis regulation, retail, manufacturing, and distribution. They've worked with some of the most prominent individuals in the world and are recognized as pioneers in their industry. My stepmother, Lila, was one of the first entrepreneurs in cannabis to open a dispensary, and my father opened the very first cannabis educational resource facility. Lila was voted Businesswoman of the Year in 2019, and her dispensary, Oasis, was voted Best Dispensary by Global Pharma two years in a row. They have both received numerous nominations and awards. My family has put everything they have into this location. They are experienced professionals and have helped to set the standard for cannabis legalization across the board. Welcoming them into Muskogee is a great way to show the local community how licensed facilities should operate, and that's because the cannabis industry is already here, and we want to make sure that things get done the right way. So like yourselves, we are community-loving Christians, and we are excited to be a part of your local area. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next person having signed to speak to us tonight is Jacob Levens. I'm going to invite you to the microphone. Please give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Jacob Levens. I live at 28158 East 112th Place South in Coeito, Oklahoma. I appreciate you guys' time. So in November 2021, we purchased the building at 800 West Oakmogie after being vacant for over a decade. Before purchasing, we confirmed with the city that the building was zoned for cannabis cultivation. The building was in bad shape with lots of water damage, but we saw the potential to return this property to former glory. We have stayed hard at work for months with numerous major renovations bringing the property back to life. We've done this while spending money with local Muskogee businesses. Whitting Hill Disposal, Triplet Plumbing, Armstrong Electric, Pro-Tech Commercial Roofing, Sergio's Construction, Mario's Garage Door, Hughes Lumber, Lowe's, Tractor Supply, and Asco Rental, or just to name a few. There is still more work left to do and opportunities for local businesses to make revenue. The building is in much better shape than we bought it. There is a brand-new roof that stops the leaks, new brick with rebar replacing broken windows and securing the front. All new steel security doors and garage doors have secured and refreshed the building. The inside has been totally transformed from a maze of damaged walls, wires, and debris to a beautifully clean, open canvas. The renovations have been many, and we still have more to accomplish. Our facility will be capable of mitigating the smell to the outside community. We have the knowledge and experience to set up our systems correctly in odor control. There will be no air released from grow rooms as those facilities will be completely sealed, carbon and HEPA filters with assistance from pre-filters and negative pressure control odor. These methods are the standard in odor control, and we can absolutely use them correctly and not cause outside disturbance to our neighbors. Since we are not a dispensary, there is no in-and-out foot traffic. We do not need or plan to advertise large cannabis branding on the building. A safe, secure facility for our work staff to work a normal schedule is all we're trying to accomplish. We are members of the Muskogee Chamber of Commerce. It's been important for us to have feedback and communication with our neighbors and other local businesses. We've worked very hard to do everything the right way with the city compliance and have been in constant contact during our renovations. We are here to add value to the community. There will be jobs provided, taxes will be paid, and revenue will continue to be spent in the city of Muskogee. I appreciate everyone on the council's time, and I hope that you guys see the positives that we have done to the building and the revenue that we are generating for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker signed to speak to us tonight is David Webb. I'm going to invite you to the microphone and ask that you give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
I'm David Webb. I'm with the 800 West Oakmogie Project, and thank you, everyone, for your time. I am here in hopes that you will grant our specific use permit. Many items I'm hearing against us do not really pertain to us specifically. Many seem like an argument against legal cannabis directly, such as how it is a gateway drug, or how it will make its way to the children, et cetera, et cetera. And this state and almost every other state in this country has found the direct opposite to those complaints to be true. So I hope those arguments are not a part of your decision today because the state has already ruled in favor and approved legal medical cannabis. The two primary objections that I have heard that do pertain directly to us are, we will affect property values negatively and the odor not being able to be controlled. I've listened to those opinions, and that's exactly what they are, their opinions. They're not factual. As a matter of fact, there's endless amounts of studies that have been completed that state being near a cannabis building increases property values. One of the studies comes directly from the University of Oklahoma. This is a direct quote from that study. "Last year, a separate analysis from economists at the University of Oklahoma similarly found that states that legalize marijuana actually see a boost in housing prices with the effect most pronounced once nearby retail outlets opened for business. I know our building in particular has been vacant for a very long time. It was in such bad condition that a local business owner," which you have a letter from them included in the package, "declined to purchase it because of its horrible condition. That gentleman stated that he felt if the building was left to sit in that condition, it was going to fall in on itself. I strongly believe that after the $140,000 in repairs that we have done to that building, it has definitely increased its value. I guarantee that it's worth more today than it was when we purchased it, which in turn has a positive effect on all the neighboring buildings and property values. As for the odor control, I have the names to multiple companies that specialize in the field of odor control and that have proven to be extremely effective in eliminating the odors. From AirPura is one of the companies. The Aliso Canyon gas leak is the worst single natural gas leak in U.S. history. 97,000 tons of methane and 7,000 tons of ethane was released in the air. The Southern California Company used air purifiers from this company to decontaminate the indoor air and remove the odors. Another one is Harvard Medical School. Harvard's University Gross Anatomy Lab found their formaldehyde was causing airborne formaldehyde particles which were contaminating the school's indoor air and also found mold growing on their cadavers. They purchased air purifiers from this same company and installed them in the labs, and after a few days, there was little to no odor or trace of any chemicals and no fungal growth either. The Florida Department of Health. Residents of Santa Rosa County were being overwhelmed with hydrogen sulfide and sulfur dioxide fumes emanating from a reclaimed garbage dump. The Florida Department of Health purchased air purifiers from this same company, and after a few days, the odors were virtually eliminated, resulting in happy residents. Each of these gases and odors are greatly more toxic and odorous than cannabis ever is. Here's another quote from another company that state they use aerosol droplets that are distributed inside cultivation rooms at the exhaust side of a cannabis greenhouse or indoor grow facility. And when combined with odor neutralizers, cannabis odors are trapped and dismantled. By employing high-pressure fogging techniques with automated program controls, they can eliminate cannabis odors completely. So I again state that it is possible to eliminate cannabis odors, and these are just two companies that are proven in their field. I understand everyone's concern about the odor, and all I ask is for you not to judge us by others' failures. And, and this is by others' failures, and understand that there are better ways available, and let us be the example for your city. We have been an active member with the Chamber of Commerce, and we have only worked with and chosen local businesses for our materials and equipment. We have been a very positive effect on this city, and we hope to have only begun and plan to continue to do so for many years to come. Thank you for your time. I hope you will grant our specific use permit and let us set the standard for this city. Thank you for your time.
The next person having signed to speak to us tonight is Sarah Lee Gossip Parish. I'm going to ask that you come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, and
My name is Sarah Lee Gossip Parish. I live at 1405 Brighton Avenue, Oklahoma City, 73120, but I grew up down the road at McAllister, where I went to First Baptist Church my entire childhood and was church pianist my senior year and junior year. Daddy was a deacon, and my. Daddy was a deacon, and my mother, Mary Lee Gossip, actually was on the Southern Baptist Home Mission Board, so I have a lot of deep Baptist ties and have been at First Baptist Norman and First Baptist Oklahoma City as well. I just felt like saying that because the pastor, whom I respect, we're all entitled to our opinions. I didn't want you to think that he had a lock on what all Baptists think about cannabis. In fact, one of my closest friends is the daughter of a Baptist minister and Baptist missionaries who have created an orphanage in Africa, and she is today the number-one cannabis banker in the country. So certainly, there's a lot of differences of opinion within the Baptist faith about the merits of medical marijuana. But I'm here as the attorney today for Oak Mogie Enterprises LLC, and I want to talk about the law first, and then if I have any other time, excuse me, I'd like to lead you through the packet to show you kind of what my clients have already said about the ability to control odor and how they will do so, about the extensive studies on the medicinal value of medical marijuana, about the studies, and they're all in your packet, that show that it actually enhances real estate values. And certainly here, I think no one could argue that the purchase of the building and renovations by my client has done anything but raise the property values. And there's also a study that medicinal use and other use of marijuana makes our streets safer. I put that in there as well. So there are lots of studies out there, if you're willing to do the research, that would support medical marijuana businesses. But I think the main point today is this: my clients moved to Muskogee. David Webb called me in October and said, "We found a building. We would like to do a cultivation license and a processing license." And by the way, they're not doing any kind of heavy chemicals. They're going to make pre-rolls, which people do at home all the time if you're a licensed patient. There's nothing involved in that. But in any event, I said, "David, you have to make sure before you purchase that building that it is properly zoned. So call the planning department and find out." David called and was assured it was proper zoning. He called me and said, "They assure me it's zoned properly," and I said, "That's great. Go ahead and buy it then." So he bought that building in direct reliance, and here today, it would seem detrimental reliance, which is a legal term for those of you who are familiar with that. I know your city attorney is. But he detrimentally relied on those representations made by city officials who were acting under color of authority, excuse me, and color of title. So there's the detrimental reliance. And then he and the company poured in significant amounts of money. They purchased it for $210. They've put roughly $140,000 into it in renovations, so they have a property interest. You know, there's a certain thing called due process property interests under the Constitution. There's a lot of issues here that people may not be familiar with in their zeal to criticize medical marijuana businesses. And perhaps one of the most important observations to make here also is that while municipalities certainly are granted the authority to regulate certain businesses within their parameters, they certainly are not afforded the authority to override state law. Now, what you may not know is that the legislature has, over the last several sessions, tried to float a bill that would limit the access for medical marijuana businesses to 1,000 feet from a church, and that has been specifically rejected by our state legislature. And it would seem that my esteemed fellow believers behind me are trying to do just that, and that is a violation of state law, and it certainly exceeds the authority of any municipality in the state, not just Muskogee, but I think that's another important thing to point out. And I did want to find the numbers because they're astronomical. Excuse me. The total minimum investment in building and renovations to date: $350,000. The total local companies and labor: $84,500. I know I'm about out of time, but the grand total: $463,300 that my clients have poured into this community in detrimental reliance on the assurances from city personnel that they would be able to get the zoning and the certificate of compliance.
I really hate to interrupt.
No, no, no. I apologize. I went over. But that is a property interest, for sure. Thank you so much for having me today, and we appreciate your time and your consideration, and I'm praying that you have the courage to look at the law and not be intimidated by the outpouring here.
Thank you, thank you. We will now close the public hearing. Counselors, we deliberate among ourselves. Let me remind us that those deliberations are among ourselves and not to any of the speakers who are presented on tonight. Do we have any discussion from the council at this time?
May I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Van.
I'd like to say this. You know, the city of Muskogee appreciates all the money spent in that building, but we also, how can I say this? We also have a problem with our downtown area with the post office, and we've had that. That was, you know, it's an old saying I have up here. You show me who you are the first time, I'm going to believe you. And believe me, I believe that post office, because every time we come through that city hall right there, go through our city center, we have to smell this stuff. And trust me, marijuana, I have nothing against marijuana, because like I say, marijuana does help people. That's the truth, because I had a lady I took care of, and I had special pills made for her, and it helped her. But I do have a problem, before I make my motion, and I'm going to make this motion, before I make this motion is that I do have a problem when I go downtown to our civic center to nice events and smell that smell we have to smell every single day. It makes me sick. I've mentioned this up here time and time again, and I'm glad to see First Baptist Church show up, because that's what it takes up here on this city council to get people's attention. I'm glad y'all think the same way I do, because like I say, when I bring people out of town here, I'm embarrassed to take them down Oak Mogie Street, because it stinks! It smells like, just like the gentleman said, it smells like a skunk. You go out on Shawnee, you don't smell it, but I just, myself personally, I just can't see them putting another marijuana grow in our city downtown. So may I, I'd like to make the motion that we deny this request for a special use permit for the 800 West Oak Mogie.
Second to motion. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Tucker, is any further discussion restricted to the motion, or if...
No, you can talk about the item.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that we just passed a special use permit for medical marijuana. Have we did our due diligence in every area on this? Because when someone invests quite a bit of money in your city, we just want to make sure that we did everything that we're supposed to do. I'm listening to the attorney speak, and I do know some of the things he's saying is absolutely right, so I'm just wanting to make sure that we did everything possible, because when I heard you read off your pros and cons to planning, I'm taking you in planning, planning denying the opportunity, some of what you were saying is that there's really no proof, it's just really our speculation. For instance, if there's an effect with the build, I mean, with the businesses, like that grow is going to affect the building two doors down if it's empty and in bad condition. So I want to be clear on that.
Yes, ma'am. What we looked at were some of the items that I named off. We looked at the traffic situations that may be caused. We did not find any substantial evidence that that would cause a problem. We considered the value or the devaluation of surrounding businesses or property. We could not find any substantial evidence to that. So we had to go through each thing. There are unknowns such as water runoff, chemical usage, odor, those types of things. So what we have to look at is what we do have substantial evidence of in order to deny the application or recommend denial, and that is something that came to our attention at the Planning Commission meeting, and that was the impact on the neighboring businesses and the odor. We do believe we have substantial evidence in that situation. It's not an arbitrary and capricious decision. We are looking at something based on not fears but facts of the community. With as many complaints as we've received, we have to deem that as a negative impact on the community. That's one of the factors that we do have to look at. Whether or not that can be mitigated, we don't know. We have not received any plans prior this time. My predecessor, Mr. Hazelton, who was the planning director prior to me taking that position temporarily, was correct in telling the people, the applicants, that the property was zoned correctly. It is in the correct zoning, but in addition to the zoning, a specific use permit looks at the broader impact of a proposed business on a neighborhood, which is why it goes before the Planning Commission and then to city council and why we review it so intently. Based on the complaint that we received at the Planning Commission Committee and since that time, that's where we have to say, yes, there is substantial evidence that there's a negative impact based on the, also on the other marijuana grows that are located downtown, the density and intensity of use in that small of an area.
Thank you. I know we said odor. I'm going to address this on the odor. We know we have an ordinance that addresses that, but we all know in this room that we have never addressed the odor at the post office. And I don't feel as councilperson that it's fair to use that and weigh it up against what we're seeing. It's not fair, because we as a whole have not even dealt with that issue, and to come back and use that is unfair.
Have we not addressed that, Roy? The odor issue at the post office?
As far as I know, the individuals from our code enforcement and inspections department have been out a number of times dealing with the applicant. I know they also had a consultant that came in, and they discovered they had some issues with their air handling, which was causing more odor than was expected or was allowable by the process that they had introduced. If you remember, Deputy Mayor, we issued a number of citations against the owner. I think they ended up paying about $5,000 in fines at the very beginning. And then we considered whether or not to revoke their license based upon the complaints. Part of the issue was, we never had anyone who was willing to provide a written complaint to us on the public nuisance issue that we were looking at. So without that, we handled it as best we could. The ordinance, which allowed medical marijuana to be in that particular zoning, which predates the requirement of a specific use permit, only allowed the escape of odor on odor on a reasonable basis because of where it was located in a commercial area. It did not require zero odor. And so when we talk about the post office, we have to remember what the criteria was at the time they were allowed, and it was not zero odor. We did not have the specific use permit at the time, and I would argue that the fact that we do have a specific use permit now is in response to issues such as the post office.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I have the...
Yes.
Mr. Tucker, verify the voting that yes will deny.
Correct. Since the motion was stated in the negative, a yes will be to deny.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, Dr. Whoos.
This question's for Roy. I just need to, I don't feel like I need to disclose. It's already been disclosed for me, so however, an argument could be made that my vote is directly business-related, not how it is. Do I need to abstain?
I would suggest that you do abstain from voting in this instance. Under 901 of the city charter, you have an affirmative obligation of any kind of hidden interest. It's quite obvious. Your business was stated by our own planning department as being a neighboring business, and so you received notice within the 300 feet, I believe. And in such an instance, since you do have a personal financial interest, since it is your business there, then I would suggest that you do abstain from any vote.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to deny. Before we have the roll call vote, let me say to all of us tonight, regardless of the outcome of this vote, please refrain yourselves from applauding or booing, and if you would desire to be excused from the rest of the meeting, I'm going to ask that you quietly excuse yourself at that time unless you would like to stay with us for the rest of the 16 or 17 agenda items that we have on the meeting on tonight. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes is a deny, right?
Correct.
Yes, I vote yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Abstain.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Definitely yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The motion to deny has passed. I'm going to ask that those who would like to be excused from this time, I will give you time to quietly do that unless you would like to remain with us for the rest of this evening.
That's not fair.
If you will sign that and pass it, that's very executive.
That's what's wrong with this town.
Nice it's just...
That's wrong with this town.
You might spend half a million dollars in your town.
That's crazy.
Two wrongs don't make a right.
They don't.
We shouldn't have dispensaries downtown. I don't think it would affect our smell of downtown odors of people and businesses. Places, they are.
What downtown, Shirley? Let's talk about downtown.
We have a downtown.
We don't have a downtown.
We do. Last the businesses that are downtown.
It's going to take him a minute because of the elevator.
Let me, at this time, entertain a motion to recess for five minutes. Motion. We have a motion and a second to recess for five minutes. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Yes. Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, we will reconvene in exactly five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. We will now reconvene from our brief recess. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Let me take this opportunity to thank the council and the waiting audience for their patience during our meeting on tonight. Item number two.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance number 4165A to rezone property located at 2900 South 24th Street West, being more particularly described in the ordinance from C1, local commercial, to I1, light industrial, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is a rezoning application filed by Kaylee Poe for R&amp;L Carriers located at 2900 South 24th Street. This application to rezone is from C1 to light industrial. The company has been in business on 24th Street for several years. The rear of the property, if I can get to the correct picture, has been zoned light industrial. This entire time, the front is C1. The business would like to bring it all into industrial zoning. The property to the north includes B&amp;B machines and industrial land for a tractor part supplier. The property to the south is undeveloped commercial property. The properties to the west includes residential houses. The property to the east is undeveloped industrial land. This zoning request does comply with the future land use map. I believe the applicant is present to answer any questions. The Planning Commission did approve this on July 5th, and these are different views of the area. And it's the front area that is currently zoned C1, and again, they're looking for light industrial. And the residential housing, you can see is to the left of that picture. All the rest is commercial or industrial. All the rest is commercial or industrial. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Bodenhammer. We have one resident individual rather signed to speak to us tonight, Mr. Jonathan Fitzgerald. I'm going to invite you to the microphone. And if you give us your name and your address, we'll have five minutes.
I'm the representative of the applicant, so I just wish to decline. If you have any questions.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion from the council?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number three.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of Resolution Number 2911, amending the land use map regarding property located at 2500 Block of South York Street, more particularly described in the resolution, from single-family residential to Light Industrial. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the land use map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer?
Thank you, sir. Item number three also correlates with item number four on the agenda tonight. This is a request to change the land use map at 2500 South York Street. It's a request by Sean Raper to amend the land use map in order to rezone the property from R1 Single Family to I1 Light Industrial to allow for the development of a warehouse they would like to lease. The rezoning request of the R1 Single Family to I1 Light Industrial does not comply with the land use map without this amendment. We recommend approval of the amendment, and we're happy to answer any questions.
We don't have any residents signed to speak to this item on tonight. We will close the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the council?
Move for approval?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number three. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number four.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of Ordinance 4166A to rezone property located at 2501 South York Street, being more particularly described in the ordinance from R1 Single Family to I1 Light Industrial. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer?
Thank you. If I can get IT to go back to the 2501 South York slideshow. Thank you. This is a rezoning application filed by Charles Yandell and Charles Randolph. They are represented by their agent, Sean Raper. This is a request to rezone a property at 2501 South York from R1 Single Family Residential to I1 Light Industrial to accommodate a warehouse facility for an overhead door company. Per the previous item approved, this complies now with the future land mass, land map use. As you can see, the area that is highlighted in gray is the site map, requesting that it be changed from residential to Light Industrial. The surrounding areas are, the majority of that is farmland. There is residential, there are some residential houses you can see toward the top of the map. This is the lot that we're talking about. The house to the left is either vacant or it's been demolished by this point. And the rest of it you can see is, is open land. Staff does recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
No one has signed to speak to this item on tonight, so we will now close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion from the council?
Move for approval?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number five.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of Ordinance Number 4164A to rezone property located at 2500 Gulick, being more particularly described in the ordinance from R1 Single Family to RA Agricultural Residential. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a rezoning request by Annette Williams to rezone the property located at 2500 Gulick from an R1 Single Family Residential to RA Residential Agriculture, so that she can continue to bale the property and grow crops in compliance of city ordinance. This property is partially located in a flood zone. Farming activity would be the only thing allowable in that area of the property. The property to the west is used for agriculture. The property to the east is residential. The property on the east side of the residential is agricultural. The property to the south is a storage facility. The property to the north is an upholstery shop. This request does comply with the future land use map. You can see the area highlighted where it says site. That is more than 10 acres, so she could also rezone to agriculture, but has requested just residential agriculture. Again, the area is highlighted in red. You can see the surrounding farmland. This is street view of the property. This is across the street and to the west. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this on July 5th, 2022, and staff recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No one has signed to speak to this item on tonight. We will now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the council?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number six.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of Ordinance Number 4167A to rezone property located at 3300 Fern Mountain Road, being more particularly described in the ordinance from A Agricultural to C3 Regional Commercial. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an application filed by the Leeds Family Trust to rezone the property located at 3300 Fern Mountain Road. This request is made to rezone the property on the corner of Highway 69 in Fern Mountain. It's highlighted in green on the map. They want to rezone it from A Agricultural to C3 Regional Commercial for the development of a commercial retail business. This property is located to the west of Pilot Travel Station, to the east of the castle, which is also located outside of the city limits, to the north of Booker T. Washington Cemetery, and to the south of the State of Oklahoma Probation and Parole District One offices. This request does comply with the future land use map. And you can see the zoning maps around it. Planning Commission did recommend approval on July the 5th. This is a street view of the corner. They're wanting to develop commercially. And planning does recommend approval.
We will now close the public hearing because no one has signed up to speak to this item. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number seven.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of Ordinance Number 4163A to close a portion of Edens Avenue and vacate the 50-foot right-of-way, maintaining a city easement for utilities located within the Judson Seafast Edition or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer, I believe you'd like to speak to us before we open the public hearing?
Yes, sir, I would. We have, we received a complaint regarding the closure of this street about 3:34 PM this afternoon. Planning Department would like additional time to research and study the area before we make a final recommendation.
Mr. Tucker, do we need a motion to strike this item?
Preferably not to strike since we've already published. I would recommend a motion to table, depending on how much time is needed. Our next meeting will be in two weeks presumably, which will be the?
25th.
25th of July.
Do we have a motion to that effect from the council?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this item to the date as described previously. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number eight.
Receive report from Three Rivers Museum as to the financial condition, project status, and progress towards achieving the public service objectives of heightening cultural diversity and area history and encouraging visitor development, as well as consider approval to renew the cooperative agreement for fiscal year 2022, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a renewal of the agreement that we have done yearly with Three Rivers Museums. This will provide $53,000 exactly in funding to be used in accordance with the terms in their agreement, which is to encourage, develop, and promote cultural activities and tourism benefiting the city of Muskogee. I had understood that Mr. Willhite would be here, but I believe we have the executive director here who is going to speak and present. Angie, if you want to come forward. And Mr. Busey is with her.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having us and for considering us for our annual funding. And I hope y'all don't mind, Doug is, Doug Buse is our vice chair. And am I supposed to give you my address or something?
No, ma'am, you may proceed.
Okay. I'm sorry. We had pre-sent our budget for this year. Our calendar fiscal year is different than you guys' is. Your guys' is July to June, and ours is January to December. So there's a discrepancy there because you only received half of our budget because of that. You did receive, I hope, the updated letter stating everything that had been done and the breakdown of the budget that was done by our treasurer, Roger Bell. And the capital improvement money, what we did with that, which received, we did receive prior authorization from the Assistant City Manager on that and our board. And there should have also been a list of our current board members in there. And we also just want to say thank you very much for continuing our funding. We can't do it without you. We also want to say thank you for all the upgrades. The five new air conditioners are wonderful. I don't know what the electric bill looks like yet, but I'm anxious to see because we're trying really, really hard to work with the new equipment. And as you know, the roof is still an ongoing project. We thought we had it fixed. The roofers thought they had it fixed. City facilities thought they had it fixed. And it, as no fault of our own, it is still an issue. But we are on the right track. We have all new windows at our front entrance because our windows were bowing and they were about to pop out. And of course, the wood trim around them, you know, is over 20 years old. So we appreciate all the upgrades and everything that you guys are doing. I only get to see one council member quite a bit. And so every time I see him, I try to tell him thank you. I do appreciate it. The museum appreciates it. The board appreciates it. And I don't like being the speaker, so I don't know if Doug wants to say anything or not.
Just to reiterate what Angie said, we couldn't do it without you guys' yearly support. You know, there's grants and donations, but you guys make it happen for us. So we thank you for that and just ask you to renew for us again this year.
And come see us because some of you have not been to see us since we changed our exhibits. Thank you.
Let me take this opportunity to be very complimentary because the remodel on the inside is near perfect in anyone's perception. It certainly is welcoming. Those areas are extremely modernized and bring a lot of life to the exhibits of the history of Muskogee, as well as the other artifacts that you all maintain. And so certainly we're very, very grateful. Any, any discussion from the council?
Did I see some new murals on the side of the building?
On the east end, yes. Very new mural.
All right.
Very nice.
So go by, take a picture.
Yeah. Encourage people to, encourage people to come through Ward III and see the great depictions that they have on the side of the building.
Yes.
Best ward in town, right, Avery?
Yes, sir. May I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We'd like to thank you too for all your service that you do for the Three Rivers Museum because, like I say, y'all do a great job. And like I say, it definitely is in Ward III. And it, one thing about Ward III though, also, you gotta take this in consideration, Deputy Mayor.
All right.
At the top, it says Midland Valley.
Okay.
So that's where I'm from.
Okay.
So you know, hey, it makes it even better. Now y'all do a great, y'all do a mighty fine job.
Proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucker, do we need a motion or we're just receiving a report?
No, we need a motion to approve the renewal of the contract.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number eight. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number nine.
Consider approval of a renewal of a lease agreement between the city of Muskogee and the Friends of Oklahoma Music Incorporated for the property located at 401 South Third Street, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker?
Mayor, members of the council, excuse me. Mayor, members of the council, excuse me. This is a renewal of the lease agreement for the depot, which, as you know, has housed the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame for a number of years. So that long-term lease has expired, so we are asking for a renewal of that lease. It will be a year-to-year with an automatic renewal provision in it. So of course, we'll be subject to funding for the upkeep, as is required. But other than that, happy to answer any questions, but staff does recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Corbell, would you like to say anything or you fine?
Next item. Make your motions go right ahead. I have a great presentation to show you, but I'm fine sitting right here listening.
And I think that presentation may be for the next item.
Next item.
Oh, I knew that.
Give you extra time to speak, so thank you for rejecting it. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's. Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number ten.
Consider approval of a cooperative agreement between the city of Muskogee and the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame and Museum for the implementation of cultural and tourism development of the greater Muskogee community, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a renewal of the longstanding yearly agreement that we have been engaged with, with the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame. This provides fifty-five thousand dollars in operational funding for the agency to be able to use to foster its intents and purposes. This is a renewal, so it will, will be effective July one and will expire June thirtieth. No significant changes, but I do believe there are some representatives, including Mr. Corbell, who have a presentation to provide to you all tonight. So at the conclusion, we will be asking for a motion to renew the cooperative agreement.
Mr. Corbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all very much for your support. This is, as I look around the room, I thought, well, what can I do to help sell this room on the Hall of Fame? And I look around, everybody in this room's been on the board or has been an executive director or have been to a show recently. And it's exciting that so many of you are so supportive. So thank you all for that. We've got an interesting thing about our hall. I'm assuming the left button here. Whoops. How about the right button? Here we go. One of the things that we've noted over the, my time here, I've only been involved in this position since April. And there's a lot of change that has already taken place and some more stuff coming. The excitement around the hall, this is our induction room during one of the tours from Tulsa that brings, comes over from time to time. This was a garden club. They brought thirty-five, forty people over from Tulsa to tour our facility. And we do a lot of these throughout the week. Of course, the Live Music Thursday has been going great and is increasing, in fact, in quality and in attendees. Of course, we've got some of the biggest names in music as inductees, as all of you are no doubt familiar. And we keep record of that on the walls. We have some exciting things going on in there. We've redone a significant portion of the hall itself, and we've sort of cleaned up some clutter and cleaned it up a bit and made it a little bit more user-friendly. And we've, and we're trying to have some fun in there. We're trying to elevate some things that we've been doing. One of the, one of the things to note is that our most recent induction was in Tulsa in February, and it had a really great effect. We had a lot of people that turned out. Our next induction show will be here in Muskogee. I've had several people say, why did you, why did you move the induction to Tulsa? Well, all four of our inductees were from Tulsa. Well, three of them were from Tulsa, and it made sense, and we knew we needed more space, so we did it in Tulsa. But the next one's going to be here. We are awaiting a final date in hopes that it might correspond with our twenty-fifth anniversary celebration. So that's going to be coming up in the fall. And here are Thursday night live shows. We are booked solid all the way up to and including September. So we are aggressively having live shows. Last week, we had two, Thursday night and a Friday night show, to big crowds and big and, and great response. So we're excited about all of that. The future, I will just tell you one thing that's, that's landed in our laps that is one of the most exciting things for this community, I think, in a long time. This is, this is the office area inside that doorway. That's the main office in the hall, behind that green wall. That's about to change. We recently found that Oki Country one oh one point seven will be leaving the mall. They will not be renewing their lease, and they will be moving into our buildings. You can see that office is going to become a new radio station, a new broadcast room for Oki Country one oh one point seven. This is something that's terribly exciting for us. I think it's really exciting for them. I think it does a lot of things for the community and a lot of things for us as well. And in fact, you can't see it very well in that picture, but if you looked in that glass, you'll see Cliff Cassill in there sitting with Katie Blair sitting next to him. I found an old picture that worked and did a little Photoshop magic. But here's the thing. The mentions on the air numerous times a day, such as one oh one point seven coming to you live from the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame, is going to be powerful. If any of you listen to Classic Vinyl Channel on Sirius XM Radio, you know that that's the only channel of all the Sirius channels that broadcasts from someplace out of New York, and they broadcast from the Rock and Roll Music Hall of Fame. So we think it's going to be a great thing for us. There's many opportunities for sponsoring, cosponsoring. There's a lot of synergy between us, and there's a lot of great things that we can do together. I think we're going to do nothing but grow. This is an opportunity for all of us to do some great things, as well as work our way toward building our own recording studio in the Hall of Fame. There would be nothing more exciting than to have some young bands come and play and then follow up the next day and be able to record a new album in our building. So we're excited about all that. Thank you for your support. Again, as we move into this, it's likely we're going to have to do quite a bit of construction. There might be some more funding that we might be requesting, but it wouldn't be that much. I'll keep you apprised of that as soon as we know some more details, but bids are being done right now. And we should know something soon. So the, the future looks great for us. We're excited. I'm excited. I've taken this on as a new, as a new role for me and, and something completely out of my wheelhouse. But I love events. I love excitement. I love something that I can make happen, and I think we can do that here. And I've got lots of support from our board. And so far, so good, I think. At any rate, any questions? I'll be glad to entertain them. There's our, that's our presentation on that.
Thank you, Mr. Corbell. Do we have any discussion from the council or what is the will of the body?
Move for approval. Thank you, Tony, for the great job that you're doing.
You, Jamie. Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be recognized.
Yes, Mr. Van.
Well, we'd like to thank you because Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame is a beautiful, beautiful place. And that's another thing is in Ward Three. We got all kind of entertainment in Ward Three. You know, we got entertainment, and you got two of the best councilmen up here in Ward Three.
Without a doubt.
We've heard.
Without a doubt.
We've heard.
I'd be a poor frog if I didn't praise my own pardon.
That's right.
But I'm just, I'll just say, sir.
But we could use you guys coming out to the shows more often.
Uh-oh.
Okay. But thank you for all your hard work, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Mr. Corbell, do you have a signed agreement with us, or do you want to? I do. If you bring that up, we can take it from you. Thank you very much. We'll get you, we'll get you a copy back.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number eleven.
Consider approval to make the Frontier Rodeo an annual event for the city of Muskogee, or take other necessary action.
This is my agenda item to members of the council and those in the public on tonight. Certainly, we are excited about this item because the rodeo for the hundred-fiftieth anniversary was one of the best give-back events that we've had for our city in quite some time. I know that we have been here quite some time on tonight, so I won't belabor the point. But for those of you who did attend, it was well attended by residents from Muskogee and abroad. In fact, to the degree that we did not have enough bleacher seats. There were people standing chair deep into the grass just to participate as spectators of this year's rodeo. It really is my belief that as we move forward as a city, that we have as many give-back programs as we can to do things in our community, to make our people and our residents feel good about themselves. And I think this rodeo demonstrated that it is one of those areas that can bring our people together. So Mr. Tucker will help me craft my motion, but what I would like as a motion or in the form of a motion is that the rodeo, Frontier Rodeo, become an annual event sponsored by the city of Muskogee, and that it be considered on a yearly basis and according to whatever budget appropriations are necessary. And that would be my motion.
I think you've articulated it very well, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
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 We have a motion and a second on that item. Any further discussion?
I think one thing, Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Van.
I think one thing, that rodeo was, I mean, wonderful. And when we was talking, and I hope when you go to Muggsy with me August the twelfth through thirteenth, they got a Pony Express. And when I say Pony Express, it's like a relay with the horses and the cowboys. That is one magnificent event. And I wish we could bring something like that and have them guys, I know one of the groups is called the Country Boys. And I wish we could bring them down here to the next rodeo because it's really exciting. That'd be something I just want to add to it.
Yes, sir.
Time to go back with you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twelve.
Consider the appointment of Deputy Mayor Derek Reed to the City of Muskogee Foundation Board, serving a two-year term, filling the expired term of former Councilor Evelyn Hibbs, beginning September one, two thousand and twenty-two, and ending on August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, or take other necessary action.
Councilor Jones.
Yes, I asked Mr. Deputy Derek Reed if he would take Ms. Evelyn's spot, and he graciously said yes.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number thirteen.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Fay Waits to the Muskogee Housing Authority to serve a three-year term, beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-two, and ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five, or take other necessary action.
Councilor Jones.
Yes, Ms. Fay wanted to continue to serve her community, so move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number fourteen.
Consider approval to appoint Mark Patel to the Muskogee Tourism Authority to serve a five-year term, filling the expired term of Sharon Thomas Ray, beginning July, I'm sorry, beginning August one, two thousand and twenty-two, and expiring July thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-seven, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Van.
There's a saying, God don't come when you want him, but he's always on time. And that's a privilege and it's an honor to put Mr. Mark Patel on the tourism board. Mr. Patel is a wonderful person, and this is long, has been long overdue. And I'd like to also thank the tourism board for voting to have someone that lives out of town to be on the board. So I want to thank the tourism board for that. And Mr. Patel, I know he will make you a very, very good board member. So I make the motion to put Mr. Mark Patel on the tourism board here in Muskogee, Oklahoma.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We moved our public comment section to the beginning of the meeting, so we will now go into item number fifteen.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section three oh seven B one and B seven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment of and the status of leave granted pursuant to the Family and Medical Leave Act to City Manager Mike Miller, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session, including but not limited to granting a further leave of absence. B pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the lawsuit styled Darwin England versus City of Muskogee, C J dash two zero zero seven dash two zero,